Great. I will call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Jennifer, can we get a roll call?
Mr. Bazir.
Here.
Ms. Buden.
Here.
Ms. Krishen. Ms. Oliver.
Here.
Mr. Patel.
Here.
Ms. Dr. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Unical.
Here.
Excellent. And we have quorum. Are there any items that anyone would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So.
Thank you, Barbara. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Bryce. Jennifer, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Bazir.
Aye.
Ms. Buden.
Aye.
Ms. Oliver.
Aye.
Mr. Patel.
Aye.
Ms. Dr. Bishop.
Aye.
Ms. Unical.
Aye.
Okay. We have members of the public.
Sorry to.
It's fine. I'll get it.
Stacy and just do everything tonight.
Okay. As a reminder for public comment, each speaker has five minutes, and we have a timer up on the screen. We will call people in the order that they signed in. So we will start with Marla Israel.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. My name is Marla Israel, and I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak here. This summer, I had the privilege of being part of the Room Rental Committee, and I think we did an outstanding job putting together our wishes for the community and for our library. Part of the vote we talked about at the last meeting in September was this idea of having an updated policy concerning acceptable behavior here in the library. I want to thank you all for taking that suggestion. I want to thank Executive Director Kate Hall for the work she did in pulling that all together, and the steps that she took in truly bringing consensus for the group. I want to urge you all tonight to please vote yes for this policy concerning acceptable behavior here in our public library. I urge you to vote yes because it's essential in a building and in an organization that is committed to learning, to free speech, as well as ensuring inclusivity, that our community understands the boundaries and the guardrails for positive behavior in this community space. I also want to urge you to vote for this because the four steps that have been outlined by Executive Director Hall are exactly the things that need to happen: your approval, a training developed, procedural documentation, and then signage. I would ask for a fifth step, for you to consider a fifth step, and that would be to bring a series of community-wide learning opportunities to build culturally responsive and trauma-informed education for our entire community. There was a hurt, there was a trauma, that we all experienced as a community in Northbrook last year, and it only seems right to build on this positive momentum and to ask, for instance, our Northbrook Clergy of Interfaith Leaders to work with Executive Director Hall as well as you and the staff to create opportunities for our community to come together, to understand issues around antisemitism, Islamophobia, Asian hate, and other issues that are right now unfortunately plaguing our political landscape. So again, I want to thank you all for the work that you've done thus far, and ask that we go just a little bit farther to bring these educational experiences and opportunity to come together here at the library to learn about each other and to learn with each other. Thank you very much.
Serena Green.
I'm just observing.
Oh, okay.
From the front. Yeah, from the front of the library board.
Okay. Moving into staff reports.
Okay. So I just have a couple things in addition to my written report. I realize I did not put an update from our conversation last month when I asked the Board for some feedback about running for the Illinois Library Association Board President. I did decide to put my name in. I do not know if I will be chosen to be on the ballot. I won't know that until January. I will keep the Board updated and let you know, but I really appreciated all of the feedback and thought, and it gave me a lot of really good things to think about. So it was very much appreciated. I also want to thank Kelly Durov. As you all know, I just got back from Italy, and so Kelly was the brains behind this month's Director's Report while also, of course, managing everything that happened at the library, including two people being stuck in an elevator, as well as the snow while I was gone. All the fun stuff happens when I'm out of the country. So I just wanted to thank Kelly for all of her great work. It is always reassuring to me to know that I can leave without having to worry because I know Kelly will handle everything really wonderfully as she did. And then I also wanted to just give a little bit more of an update on the Illinois Library Association Legislative Meetup that we are all going to on December 3rd. I know in the past Stacy and Janet have had a chance to attend. This is an opportunity to hear from the ILA Legislative Consultants—sorry, my brain just stopped there for a minute—as well as to meet and talk with our local legislators. We don't have a ton of space to talk with the legislators, but I did want to just encourage all of you—I have linked the ILA legislative priorities, both for the state and federal, and there's two that I want to just call out that if you have an opportunity in talking with the legislators at the breakfast, I think would be beneficial for them to hear directly from trustees. One thing that we're working on is making e-books—passing legislation that would make e-books equitable and affordable. Since May, we have circulated over 50,000 e-books. That's not e-audio, that's not magazines, that's not movies, that's just e-books. The average ebook for an individual costs about $13. The average cost for a library ebook is $55 and typically has a two-year lifespan. If we had paid for each of those individual checkouts at that rate, we would have spent over $2.9 million. This is something that the publishers have taken advantage of public libraries, and there are a number of other states that have been looking into this, and I think it's really important that we share how vital a resource this is for our community. If any of you read e-books, that would be a great opportunity to share some of that and the importance in terms of accessibility and availability for our community. The other thing I wanted to mention was the legislation to have required annual trustee training for public library trustees. You might feel like, "Well, that seems kind of pointless. We do tons of training," which is true. We are unique. Of the 600-plus public libraries in the state, many trustees have received no training or orientation or onboarding, nor do they attend anything, nor do they seek to educate themselves about library matters. As you know, there are very complicated things that we are grappling with in public libraries today. Having required training—which the state already has modules that people can access for free, so there would not be a cost other than time—would allow us to grow better boards so that they could all hope to achieve the level of responsibility and knowledge that our Board shows. And this is something that is already required in higher education, in community college, and also ironically in Illinois, the Pension Fund Board is required to do annual training. So I would urge you to share how valuable you find training and how you feel that it would help build—if you feel this way, of course, if you don't, don't lie to the legislators—but that it would help build stronger libraries within the state. Because there are many of us going, I'm going to also ask that we try and split up and not all sit at the same table. Because as lovely as you are all to talk to, the goal is to not talk to each other, but instead to talk to our legislators. So we have four legislators at the moment in attendance, and hopefully we can split up. So if you have a legislator that you're dying to sit at that table, please let me know. I will be there early so I can show you guys where all the tables are, and I'm happy to also—if you haven't been before—to answer any questions if you have a one-on-one —I want to have a caller, one-on-one conversation.
Okay. Do we know—they haven't coordinated seating, have they? Because sometimes I go and, you know, you get a table assignment, so.
So they do not do table assignments?
Yeah.
Which is great, but not great.
Yeah.
Because it kind of is a free-for-all.
Mm-hmm.
So come early. Any questions on anything I covered or on anything else from my written report?
I have a question on that, on the first point about the ebooks. So what are the proposed solutions that you're most in favor of for that challenge right now?
So the Connecticut passed—no, Connecticut or Massachusetts, my brain is not working well tonight—one of those two East Coast states passed a bill saying that if at least one other—the bill won't go into effect until one other state with a population of over 5 billion passes it. Now, New Jersey is looking to pass it. The bill states that libraries will be prohibited from purchasing ebooks unless the publishers have more reasonable pricing. This might sound like a really awful idea because it seems like we would say—it would be depriving our patrons of what we say they really need. We have tried passing legislation which has been struck down in the courts, calling for publishers to have reasonable pricing, to relax some of the limits. None of that has been successful. After passage, it has all been struck down in different courts across the country. So this is a new tact, and the hope is that it will—if enough states do this—which we are hearing that there will be probably more states doing this—looking at kind of putting pressure on the publishers. Because frankly, of the 9,000 public libraries in the country, we spend, you know, tens if not hundreds of millions of dollars with publishers, both on physical and e-content every year, and are a critical source for them of funding. So it's basically just putting more of the onus on us. This is a, I will say, contentious approach, but there is a group that has been on the forefront of keeping up with what is going on with ebook legislation, and they say that this has the best chance of success at a national—at a state and then a national level. You may hear some people talking on the third that they don't think this is the right way to go. I think that doing something and trying it, and then if it doesn't work, we can adjust, is better than doing nothing. We've been trying to do something for almost two decades, and nothing positive has come of it. So if this maybe will help us move the needle a little, I feel like that is a good thing, even if it isn't the best long-term solution. So I don't know if that gave you that.
What do the smaller libraries do in terms of budgeting for ebooks if they're so costly? What happens? Aren't their nonparticipation affecting sales in some way?
Sure. So as we know, here in Illinois, there's over 600 public libraries. Over half of them have budgets of under $250,000. The state recommends spending between 8% and 12% of your budget on materials. So like, let's just say that they're spending $25,000 a year on materials. They're probably paying to be part of a consortium, but they're not able to buy any additional copies. So for us, we are able to buy additional copies to meet demand for our patrons. So that means that they might be part of an ebook lending program, but their patrons are waiting six, nine, 12 months, or not having access to the amount of materials. So it is absolutely impacting our ability to serve our patrons. And the publisher's stance has always been that libraries are taking money away from authors and publishers. They do not see us as a partner. They see us as a competitor, which to me is very interesting because I see us as partners. We're all trying to get books into people's hands. We also know there have been—there was a study done by Pew that shows that people that use the library and read books from libraries are more apt to buy more books. And so we're actually helping drive sales, but the publishers disagree. They haven't said why. They said that the study, though, didn't—they just don't agree.
And there's a contradiction there, too, because—
Just what?
Books are expensive.
Correct.
To go out and buy a book is expensive.
Correct.
So I'm going to think twice about it, and if I can't get it from the library, guess what? I'm going to go on to something else that I can get.
Yes.
So it's all kind of contradictory.
Yes. It is assuming that everyone is using the same set of logic to evaluate a situation, and it's very clear that the publishers are not using the same set of principles and logic, which is unfortunate. So—it is interesting because authors have spoken out in favor of publishers working better with libraries, and the publishers are like, "No," even though their argument is that they're doing this for the authors.
Do you even have that in mind?
Well, correct. They are. They are. So this is absolutely an issue, and as we know—because we've done some community education around this over the last couple of years—people don't realize this. When they realize it, they are generally appalled, right? Because if you said, "Oh, well, sure, you can buy that computer, but it's going to cost you five times as much, and after two years, you're not going to be allowed to use it, even if it's still totally functional and totally fine." I don't—yeah, it's frustrating. If anyone wants to go deeper, there's like tons of studies and research, and I'm happy to share any of that. You can go—you can go pretty deep. And it's—I was looking back at a presentation I did 15 years ago and—to my Board at my last library, and it was about the unfairness of ebook pricing. And it has actually gotten ironically worse because back then, the pricing was high, but they didn't have limits on either number of checkouts or on the amount of time you could lease it. They didn't have like the two-year limit or the 26-checkout or 52-checkout limit, which many of them also have, still at the very high price points. So.
In terms of the number of checkouts, having had the experience of being in the middle of an ebook and then the time expires and then I need to recheck that out, so essentially my lack of reading that book through in the time—
Two checkouts.
It's—it's—
And so if it was a checkout-limited book, that does count as two.
Wow. That is going to make me read these books much more quickly, for sure.
And please, if you are reading them and are done, please return them early. Don't wait for them to—because that also—if there is a—so for instance, let's say that there's a two-year limit. If each one is checked out for three weeks—that is—I can't do math right now, but that is X number of checkouts. If you hold it for all three weeks, that significantly limits—even if you finished it after a week. But if you return it, we can get it to the next person much faster.
And has there been—what kind of movement has there been within Illinois on this subject? So is there activity at the legislative level that we can refer to?
Okay. So I am—we are being recorded.
Okay.
I'm just trying to think how to say things. Give me a moment.
If there—how—
So the Illinois Library Association is the primary driver of legislative priorities in the state. The Illinois Library Association has hired a legislative consultant that provides recommendations and directs where energy and attention goes. It has been a hard sell to convince the consultant and the leadership of the Illinois Library Association that this is critically important and something we should be putting resources into. It took many of us pushing for like a year and a half to get this in the forefront.
Thank you.
Okay. If you would like to know more, Adam, let me know.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Any other questions for Kate about legislation, legislative breakfasts, or her report?
And there will be food at the breakfast. Yeah.
Okay. Moving into Board Member reports.
I have one.
Oh!
I just want to—I think Kate is aware—I know Janet is—my wife and a few of her colleagues have been using the Media Lab upstairs as part of the collaboratory, and her colleagues are from a few neighboring suburbs, so they understand libraries really well. And all of them have been raving about the service of the staff from the collaboratory to support them and the room itself. They've been there probably a half a dozen times since our last Board meeting, and so I get to hear every week new accolades.
Friday mornings.
Yep. So I just wanted to pass it along and particularly appoint to the staff in the collaboratory.
I will be sure to pass that along as well. And we're very excited about Venita's podcast and are looking forward to sharing with the community that someone is producing something in the library that will be beneficial to students. So that's going to be very cool. Stay tuned.
I have a couple of updates. The first is that as part of the Village's strategic plan, I had the opportunity to do an individual interview with the consultants, which isn't notable other than when I logged into my individual interview, I was greeted with a "Thank goodness, I've been waiting to meet you. Everyone has raved about the library." So the first question is something to the effect of what contributes to the quality of life in Northbrook, and the individual that I met would said every person they had interviewed listed the library on that list. So kudos to Kate and the staff and everyone who makes that possible.
Including the Board.
Sure, including us, but yeah. Nobody thinks of the Board when they think of how we're in the library. Yes. If they did, they would be here.
Whoa!
Are adoring public. And then the second thing is that Adam, Kate, and I participated in the meeting that I think most of you saw the email about with Niles Maine and some other community libraries regarding immigration enforcement in our area and what libraries are going to do or if there's anything we can do. There weren't any real takeaways from that meeting, other than maybe some ongoing meetings to discuss how libraries can leverage resources from RAILS and rely on each other for information sharing. There was no action taken at the meeting. We didn't expect there to be. No immediate ideas beyond what we're all already doing in terms of consulting with our individual legal counsels. So it was not that long of a meeting, maybe an hour? I don't even know.
Yeah.
It felt a little longer. Unsurprising to most of us, Kate jumped in and helped lead the meeting when it seemed like there was a little bit of floundering about what the agenda should be and provided some good resources.
Because there wasn't an agenda.
Okay. I was trying to be—
No, I know. You're right. You're right. We're being—
Yeah. So overall, nothing that changes anything. We're doing nothing that changes any of the information we've previously shared, but maybe some additional updates in the future if we continue to meet with that group. It sounded like maybe a monthly cadence if there was interest from enough libraries.
Yeah.
Did I cover it? Adam, anything you want to add there?
I would only add that it's—it was positive to see the spirit of collaboration that everybody brought to that meeting and a goal to seek, to support one another.
Anything else for Board Member reports? Okay. Moving into unfinished business, we have a health insurance benefits proposal update.
That's me. So you'll see that I am sitting here. I wanted to be presenting up there, but you've got me sitting here. So you probably have seen a memo in the Board Packet, the work that we've been working on since the October meeting. But the really big kind of takeaway that I wanted to share with you all is that we learned over the last few weeks that IPBC, who is our Intergovernmental Personnel Benefits Cooperative, which provides benefits administration for a lot of units of local government, including our very own Park District in Northbrook and the Village, they let us know they needed more time to gather all of the information that we requested because we wanted to be as comprehensive and thorough as possible. So in the spirit of presenting the most complete and accurate information for you all to consider, we do need to postpone my presentation till January. I did confirm with IPBC that we have until March 15th to make any final updates that you approved to our benefit plans that would take effect in July. So we are still on the target, but we are—had to adjust the timeline a bit to make sure that they could give us all the underwriting information, the plan design comparisons, the utilization data that we requested that they give to us, so that we have all of the tools and data we need to present all the options to you. And then to also confirm that this review is very timely and very important, earlier this week, IPBC emailed all of its members and told us that it's looking like there will be another larger-than-expected increase to the insurance premiums in the year ahead, which really reaffirms within me that we are leaving no stone unturned, that we are going to find savings for the library where we can and really investigate this further. So that just kind of reinforced like, okay, this is a time to make some changes where we can, and I really look forward to being up there in January to show what we have found as part of this review. So that is the short and sweet update.
Thank you, Becky. Any questions for Becky? You know, you're always welcome to stand at the podium. You don't have to wait for a presentation.
Thought I needed a slide down. Next.
Moving on to the website development project.
So Linda is going to be presenting in just a minute, but I wanted to start with a little bit of background that has been included in some of the reports. You can come—oh, we don't have another chair. Yeah. So I'm going to just talk for like a minute or two before I turn things over to Linda. As you may recall from reading in the Packet, our CCS Consortium recently voted to adopt Bibliocore as a new discovery layer for our library catalog. And the reason I wanted to just talk about this a little bit more with you is because it is very much woven into website stuff. So Bibliocore is essentially a skin, if you will, on our existing patron-facing catalog. Its goal is to make it much more streamlined, much more intuitive, much easier to navigate, put holds on items, find items, even finding events, which we can't currently—we don't currently put—we'll be able to put events in there that people can search for. Our—the Bibliocore is, I think of, as a much more up-to-date interface. If you look at our current catalog, it has like a very nice '90s vibe to it, and so this will help make it, I think, a little bit more intuitive and easier for patrons to use. Why does that matter for the website? Those are two separate things. Well, patrons do not—we know this from user testing for many years—patrons don't see the catalog and the website as two separate things. They see it as one thing. And so one of our main goals in the work that Linda and the website team has done is to find options that will allow us to seamlessly integrate the two, so it doesn't feel like you're going from one platform to another platform. To patrons, it's all just the library online, and so we want it to feel that way. One of the things that is important is that it be able to have the same branding and the same look, as well as potentially integrating things—like I'll give an example—in terms of book lists. So Bibliocore will allow us to create responsive book lists that we can make into carousels and put on websites. That way, it isn't just a list with hyperlinks. It is actually much more visually appealing. So this is something that when we were thinking about the website, we very much were thinking about how it would look to make that seamless integration. And so—that is just a brief little—before Linda dives into our different options—of something that I want us all to keep in mind as we're thinking about this because it is something that is really critical, because it's how patrons look at things. And so that is the end of my portion, and now— And now Linda Varing, our Marketing and Communications Manager, who you heard from previously, is going to talk to us about the options for our web redesign.
So I get to have the exciting portion now, but thank you, Kate, for explaining the Bibliocore layer because it's really important, and it's kind of important in terms of this decision. So hopefully you've had a chance to glance over the information that I put together. The website team kind of shortlisted three vendors that we did deep dives on. The website team kind of shortlisted three vendors that we did deep dives on. I attended many webinars, spoke to many people, talked to a lot of other libraries that are using these solutions that went through the integration process, that have similar technologies to integrate into our site as we do. And with that, I kind of provided just a short paragraph of information about how I felt that each solution kind of matched up to our needs. So there is a chart also, the comparison of website development vendors. Hopefully that was somewhat helpful. Where it just went through, and as you can see, most of the vendors are meeting most of our needs. So they have a lot of similarities. One similarity is everything would be built on WordPress. Right now, we're on Drupal, that's our content management system. So that is just going to be a little bit better of a platform in terms of the fit for us. And another similarity is that all of them will be able to do, you know, a great job of integrating our needs in terms of technology. They're going to produce a website that is much more modern and seamless looking than our current website. And I think customers would be happy no matter what choice you make. So what is the difference then? So the main difference is that cyber optic and web links are what I think of as static sites, kind of similar to what we have today. So the site is built, it's custom tailored, using templates or custom code to give exactly what we're looking for, but then that's it. It's launched and we're kind of just sitting there with this site that stays the same until we go back and we hire them to come do some more features or, you know, change the look of it. In terms of taking care of it and maintaining it, that's kind of where we are today. We either have to outsource to another web developer to help us with that. If we have new technologies, new integrations, even things as minors, like a point upgrade or a major upgrade can, you know, create havoc. We've seen it with our site. Anyone that's worked with WordPress knows that there are a lot of updates. Each tiny widget that integrates with the website has its own kind of timeline. And so it's, it can be very challenging. And in both web links and cyber optic did kind of have an option as far as support, but it was, it was basically what we have today, where it's an hourly charge and then we kind of like submit a ticket and say, this is broken, or we need this, or can you do an accessibility check? And then they'll do that thing for us, they'll propose a cost and do that thing. So the difference is, well, there are a few differences with Biblioweb that are pretty remarkable. One is that they provide the 24-hour, seven support. That's something that even the other two vendors would not be able to provide. If we had an urgent issue that happened in the middle of, you know, the night on a Sunday, we could submit a ticket. Hopefully that would never happen. They're also doing things like constantly monitoring for any widgets that we might have, you know, plugin issues for, to make sure that they're, they're not aspiring, that they don't have upgrades. They need to do security maintenance and then as well as accessibility, which was right at the top of our list in terms of things that we thought were important for this website. So they're, they had the most robust solution in terms of support, both security, accessibility, and just general wide site support. So that's pretty cool. And from our end, I think that'll make our lives a lot better in terms of not having to worry so much. I know our IT department was also very excited to hear that they were going to be giving such comprehensive support. When we were sitting in the webinar, I heard Adam, or I heard, yeah, Adam was just like, oh, he was very excited about that. And then in terms of what Kate was talking about with integrating with this Bibliocore layer, so we're already going with Bibliocore, that's like a known entity. So Biblioweb for libraries that decide to go with the Biblioweb solution, it kind of like brings everything together. So when I was talking about like the difference between a static site and what I see as a dynamic site, is this site is going to be constantly evolving. They, I was watching one of their red roadmap webinars, and they're already talking about what they're going to be doing in 2026 and 27, and it's pretty cool stuff. So they crowdsource ideas from other libraries that are interested in this feature, and then people upvote or downvote, and then things that tend to be very popular with a lot of libraries, they go ahead and build the features. And that's just all included in that maintenance cost. So while the maintenance cost looks like possibly a little higher, it's just incorporating a lot of these other costs that we would have to be constantly paying the other solution providers. And I mean, they're, they're really thinking of things the patrons would be interested in, such as a lot of personalized content, which at first I was like, personalized? That seems a little scary, but it's opt-in. So if you are interested in just like, I just really want to see things about like history and geography, you can, you know, opt into different things. And you're going to get served up on your website, content that you might be interested in, which is, I think, really exciting. And it's kind of what people expect in a modern day web experience. They want something that's a little more, you know, giving them what they're interested in. So if you're, if you don't have kids and you're not really interested in seeing the story time of the day, you're not going to see that on your website. So that is something that none of the other solutions would be able to provide. So for those reasons, our recommendation and the group's recommendation was Biblioweb as a solution. And I think I've given some reasons, but if anybody has any questions or wants to dive a little deeper on anything, feel free.
Kelly, I did have one question. I was pretty sold on Biblioweb doing web, haven't gone through many.
Okay.
Web changes.
Okay.
To my career also. The one thing that surprised me a little, it was under the additional implementation costs, possible additional costs for migrating existing webpages at $185 an hour. My experience shifting websites, that's the essence and the crux of it. It's not some sort of, how else would you get the content onto your new website? That seemed very odd to me.
Yeah, and, and I have to say, you know, the other solutions that was integrated into the implementation cost, so I kind of had that same feeling when I heard that basically you sit down with the, the implementation architect, decide what you want your site to look like, what you want it to do, then they kind of map that out, build the templates, and then it's up to you to integrate your content into the template.
So you have to.
So their, their thought was moving over fewer pages is better. Don't bring over every page that you currently have on your site. Think about.
I would agree with that.
Do the research to just bring over a fewer amount of pages. And so if we were to try to do it all on our own, I think, you know, that's what we would have to do, is just really concentrate on those pages. And then over time, we can always migrate over. But to launch, just what are the most critical pieces of information that we want on the site?
You know, sort of a huge amount of the work that is done, the meaning of the word shift to a new website.
Yeah.
Is primarily shifting your content.
Right.
Which is sort of basic to the, to the entire project. So I was thinking, if they're not, if they're charging to move content, charging extra, what on earth are we paying them for? If they're not going to do that except for an additional price.
Right.
So that seemed very strange to me.
Yeah.
Janet, because I've also migrated over a bunch of websites, and it was really weird to me as well. Having sat through several of the webinars, their approach is, I think, really unique in that they're basically saying, yeah, you have a website, but like, we're going to kind of ignore that and start from scratch. And so it's almost as though it's like, if you had no web presence and we're starting from scratch, we're going to walk you through from a accessibility and usability perspective, what the best practices are, so that you're not carrying over like, so one of the things that you see on a lot of library websites is, you have the kids page, and the teen page, and the adults page, and the seniors page. And it's like, okay, like, you're not, that's not how people think. And so they're trying to move us away from librarian thinking because they know librarians very well. And, you know, this was, Bibliocore was a company that was started by the Canadian government to support Canadian libraries and has been in operation for over 20 years now, and now is its own separate entity. And so they only do libraries. And so they have gotten to know, I would say, how librarian brains work, and know that we like to store information, well, we should carry over every single page. And so I think, I agree, it struck me as super weird, but when I started thinking about their approach, it made more sense to me. And so I've tried to shift my thinking around it from like, okay, let's pretend we don't have a web presence at all. What would best serve our patrons, starting from ground zero?
That makes sense, yeah. It, it just jumped out, I just, it jumped totally.
I felt the same. I was like, oh, everything was going really well, and then it was that. And then I'm thinking already, like, do we have the bandwidth to do this? So that's why we asked for the extra pricing, to see what it would cost if we really were, you know, in the situation where we needed some extra.
I do think website shifts are the, kind of like moving houses.
Yeah.
Are a key time to really assess your content and figure out what you do not need. So that I entirely agree with, I just, you know.
Linda, do you know how many pages we currently have on the site?
It's around 200.
Yeah.
Is that typical for a library of this size? Is that more or less, or is it hard to?
I don't know if there's any measurement.
Okay.
You know, because some libraries, and with Biblioweb too, like there, you have your static pages that barely change. They're kind of like your services pages and your resources, your accessibility pages. And then with Biblioweb, it really, another change that I didn't really talk about, like in terms of what we currently do today, is they're really focused on giving library staff that aren't normally involved with the library, like a chance to create content. So whether it's like the dynamic book list that Kate was talking about, blog posts, there is one other element that is pretty cool. They've created dynamic dashboards using Looker Studio, which is the same tool that is being used to create the data dashboards that we have here at the library. And so for instance, if a librarian creates a book list, they'll be able to like go on this dashboard and see in real time how many patrons have looked at the book list, how many have checked out items from the book list, and kind of like, it gives them a little bit more autonomy with the website and a little more ownership. I think, my hope is that people will be creating content that will be that dynamic content that maybe isn't here for all of eternity, but it's here for this month, or it's here for, you know, a certain amount of time. So I think those pages, because currently, right now, all of that type of, like our news and events page are things that the marketing team creates, it's a little, it's a little limited in the number of pages that we can create. But if we have other staff creating content, then I think maybe we have fewer of those static pages, but more of the dynamic pages. So I don't know if that answered your questions, but I think that's what a library, a lot of libraries are doing. And when you look at many current library websites, and I've looked at many, 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 they all kind of look the same. So some of them have a lot of content on the one page, which I'm not a big fan of, and some of them are a little more curated, but they're, they're all kind of embracing that, like putting content that is very personal to users and making it easy for them to find what they're looking for with just a fewer amount of clicks, so.
Linda, did any of them talk about search engine optimization and how they work with page titles or things like that?
I, we did not get into search engine optimization, no. I know every library has that thing where you have to like select if you want to search for, you know, events or catalog or website, and I did ask about that, and there is just no getting around it. If somebody comes up with a way to do that, they will make a lot of money, because it would be great to have an integrated search.
I noticed on one of the pages, the timeframe for implementation was pretty long with Biblioweb compared to the middle option, at least.
Yes.
Three months for the middle versus.
Yes.
A little seven or eight months. Is that okay?
Well, part of that is because of the Bibliocore component. That has to get installed and people need to be trained on using that. So it doesn't have to be launched by the time we start working on the website, but it does have to be there. So it's, I think that is, I'd have to go back to my notes, but I do believe that that is one of the reasons that it's expanding the time length for Biblioweb.
Three months also feels weirdly short.
It does.
Like, that actually, that one concerned me when I saw that, like, what?
Three months is.
Three months?
I don't think I've ever done a website transition in three months.
Like maybe six.
I, I.
Maybe, yeah.
If you're like only doing.
Very lucky.
Yeah.
So.
Does, did Bibliocore speak at all about their use of AI and any relationships they may have with AI companies? And, and if the data that would be generated from the combination of Bibliocore plus the website data, how that would be handled from a privacy standpoint?
They did speak a little bit about AI in terms of future roadmap items, but they said they were just at the infancy stage of working with some different vendors to kind of figure out if this was going to work for them. So it's not.
Apparently not.
And that came up a lot during the demos for the Bibliocore, when we were looking at this discovery layer interfaces, because a lot of the directors, myself included, had a lot of patron privacy concerns, right? Especially because you could access patron data in it. And so we were assured during those that anything that would be developed would be a, we could turn it on or off, so that we could assess whether or not it was something that met our standards in terms of patron price, patron privacy and accuracy of information.
Yeah, on that note, I, because I was looking at the, the services agreement for Biblioweb, and obviously I know that legal counsel will look at it, but what jumped out, it means obviously they're host, they're hosting the data, but there aren't any like data security obligations attached to the agreement or referenced within the agreement. And I, so I would want to like make sure the legal counsel knows that that needs to get integrated, and also the library should be indemnified for breaches of data security. Obviously, there's like portal terms of use and privacy policy that the end users actually click through to create that like privatey contract between the end user and them, but the library would want to be protected as well, like on that MSA level.
Yes. We will make sure that that is included. But yes, and that was, because that was some stuff that we had to update, that I know that CCS staff had to update when they were working on it, on the Bibliocore contract, so. And they were very open to like adjusting. So I'm like, oh, okay, good. So this should, I'm hoping, I'm, I've been following like, okay, how easy was it? And asking the executive director of CCS, how easy was it? Were they really negotiable? And she's like, oh, yeah, they changed everything we wanted. I'm like, great, so.
Yeah, if they feel confident about their data security posture, then they should feel confident about putting that in the agreement.
Yep.
Linda, thank you. This is a lot of research and sweat equity put into this, and really appreciate it.
And the best way we can show our appreciation to Linda is by passing a motion tonight.
That was smooth.
I'll be here all night. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve any of the three vendors, though it does sound like we've reached consensus on Biblioweb. So the motion would be to approve Biblioweb as the library's website development vendor and to authorize a contract now to exceed $16,000 for implementation services.
So a motion.
Thanks, Adam. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thanks, Janet. Jennifer, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Baser?
Yes.
Ms. Boothon?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Spectra Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Genical?
Yes.
Great. Moving into new business. Public code of behavior policy, Esther.
Hello, everyone. As you know, we have been working very hard on updating the public code of behavior policy. One of the things that I realize I neglected to mention, but which Marla so kindly referenced in her comments, was that prior to all of the work we did with staff, we really were also informed by the process that we went through with the meeting room policy. And so the goal of updating this policy, which we're now going to call, if the board approves it, the patron behavior policy, is that we wanted this to be something that still made very clear what our, what our obligations were as staff, but also what, what we are expecting of patrons and their behavior while in the library. But we also wanted to take a very much a trauma-informed, equity-centered approach to this. And so you'll see a lot of new language in there that talks about how we are going to approach things, and that we're not necessarily always going to treat everything the same, because not everything can always be treated the same. There are a lot of individual considerations. We have removed a number of pieces of language that our attorney has advised, based on our update of the meeting room policy and our First Amendment obligations, really shouldn't be in there. Staff had a lot of really great comments about how we could update the policy to make it much more usable when they are interacting with patrons, to uphold those core standards. It's much easier if you can say, like, you know, oh, you know, you, you know, may not shout at us, you may not shout at another patron, you may not behave in this way that's violating our patron behavior policy, and, and have something direct that they can point to. So I'm, I'm happy, I know that there were a lot of track changes, and I know that that can be a little confusing. I had Jennifer put a clean copy in everyone's blue folder, just in case there are any changes that anyone is like, oh, but I felt like this still needs some work. I do want to let everyone know, this has been reviewed by the attorney, so Julie has signed off on all of this and feels like this is a very strong policy, both in terms of creating the atmosphere we want to create, but also in terms of being legally defensible. And I'm happy to answer questions on any of the individual pieces of all of this.
I'll hop in, I think that conceptually, the, the policy is, is really good, and I, I like the updates. I just have a couple of wording, maybe like wordsmith-type suggestions, that I think could make it more aligned with the intent and read smoother. So the first one is using the word stop, like, people's action shouldn't stop others from using the library, um, I think it's somewhere else, too.
The second paragraph under patron responsibility?
The second, the second paragraph under patron responsibility, and then the numbered one underneath that. So I think, yeah, I just think that, like, the previous version used interfere, or some kind of that type of language, because obviously the behavior might not, like, cause someone to fully stop being in the library. So that's just one point. And then the other one is, I think that that second paragraph under patron responsibility and that number one could be combined into, like, a, a number one, because it talks about, like, interference includes but is not limited to, but then the word interference isn't linked back, and then the list after doesn't give all examples of interference, right? Some of it's, like, permissive, like, you can have drinks or food in the library, so.
Doesn't have parallels to this construction.
Right.
Sorry.
Such a librarian. So those are my two comments, and I think that those can be, can be tackled with, you know, without a huge amount of, like, rewording, but I think that would help make it read better.
Okay, was the word stop used as part of the effort to sort of make the language more accessible to everyone?
Yes, so one of the things that I did, after we had made all of the changes, before it was sent to Julie, was looking at it, I ran it through a, um, a checker to say, what is the language, the great, the reading level language? And it was clocking in at a ninth grade reading level, and, um, and just recognizing that we have a 20% of our population are immigrants, granted, very, very well-educated and, you know, highly skilled, but that English might not be their original language, that perhaps, like, taking it down. So I did change interfere to stop, as well as some other words, to make, to try and make the language more accessible. I do agree with Bryce, though, that I do think, in, you know, hearing what she said, like, stop does feel much more, like, like, I'm going to body-block you from coming in, and, and it's like, interfere gives more room for flexibility. And so, so I, I would be, I mean, I do think interfere does, it, it is a little bit of a higher-level word, but I also think that it just captures. Bryce did mention this to me, and I tried to find another word that wasn't interfere and wasn't stop, I didn't come up with a good solution.
Or prevent, prevent others.
I just needed Barbara.
Prevent feels strong to me, too, though, like, I think that's as strong as stop, like, is it prevent you from using the library, well, still use the library, but it's, like, unreasonably disruptive to your use of the library, that feels more, like, in line with the intent, to give the staff the more, like, flexibility they need to enforce it.
Could you say not? Could you say just disrupt?
So I did put some, if you could scroll up higher, Erin, I put together some, and keep scrolling up higher. Okay, so, and if you could make it just a little bit bigger. Perfect. So great. So this is the alternative language that I tried to come up with, that I thought hopefully captures the intent, but also streamlines things and ensures.
It's wordy.
It is wordy. This is true.
Yeah. Let's not get caught, you know, stop, interfere, prevent, whatever you, everybody agrees, let's, we could wordsmith. Wordsmithing by committee is never, uh?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Too productive, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I like how this is drafted, I don't think, it's just, it's just, it's, it's, it's actually less wordy than the second paragraph plus number one, right? It condenses the number of words into one, well, I guess, two sentences, as opposed to being one, two, three sentences, so it's actually a little bit shorter.
I think this also works better, because to Bryce's point, it allows for that, the appropriate amount of subjectivity, because people being nonsensical in a meeting room may not stop you from using the library, but it is reasonably disturbing, and I think there needs to be a gray area there of what that means. Like, disrupt and disturb and interfere are better for me, from my perspective, than stop, which indicates that, like, I have to leave because it's so unbearable, or I can't get anything done, or I can't use the space. So I like this.
Okay.
To kind of play off of what you were just talking about, Stacy, in terms of Section Two of the patron responsibility, and really the Section Three, that it's, it doesn't get, it, it isn't until the end of the list that it's clear that it is staff that's determining what is considered, um, you know, an aggressive gesture or intentional invasion of space. And I, my hope would be to make that clear at the start, so that people underst, so that as folks are looking at the patron responsibilities, they understand that while these are responsibilities, I, as patron A, um, am not making the decision on whether patron B's behavior is considered, you know, uh, physical intimidation, that that's a, and a nonpartisan third party, uh, that staff member making the, taking, making the ultimate, ultimate consideration of how to characterize that behavior.
So Erin, can you scroll up for a minute? And keep scrolling. So I just put the last paragraph kind of up there, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
So instead of ending with it, we're just starting with it?
Yes, so, so that people, before they even read the list.
So they know what the consequence is and how we're going to be, how we're going to be evaluating.
Yeah.
Great.
Good suggestion.
Yeah, yeah. That way it's very clear. Our, um, I was talking with one of the attorneys in suicide, you know, I know when people, like, go to look and read this, and I'm like, oh. I love that you think people are going to really actively seek this out, like, this is going to be something that staff are going to provide, that we're going to share with people. I think it would be great if everyone walking in actively was like, let me first read their patron behavior policy. I feel like it's our responsibility to educate them on it.
There were a number of comments in the user about noise.
Yes.
And so what, you know, where does the line drawn, how, how noisy is too noisy?
Yes, well, and, and staff had really good points, because we worked with a lot of people that have had hearing loss, and so staff and those patrons often speak louder in order for them to be able to interact with them, and that might be louder than you're comfortable with, and we will help you find a space so that you won't be disturbed, but it doesn't mean that patron doesn't deserve to be here and get served.
I have a question about Section Three, the sexual harass.
Yes.
So is items seen, is that in the right place? Is that about sexual harassment?
It is.
Okay, and I trust that you and the lawyers have gone through it, I just wanted to.
We have, and we talked extensively about that one. This one is unfortunately the one that is most frequent.
Okay, so my other question is, is there, and this is something that has come up in the past with patrons, if a patron is either using their device in the library and looking at pornography, is there a different policy if they are in a general area of the library versus in the children's section of the library? And is it possible to separate those two with policy?
So, we have our internet policy. Our internet policy stipulates that adults may only use the internet computers and Wi-Fi in the children's area if they are accompanied by a child. And so that was how we went to adopt that. I have literally, in my 25-plus years, never seen an adult with a child doing that. It's usually single men.
And they would not be in the?
They would not be.
Okay, got it. So we have it covered, just not here?
Not here, it's in the internet policy.
So if a patron asks someone to move, or asks someone not to use it, they would be backed up with the policy?
Yes, and this also, policy, if they're viewing, even though, you know, pornography is protected under the First Amendment, people's disruption or interference with someone else's use of the library is not. And so we would work out a solution which could be, oh, we need you to put this privacy screen on, we need you to move to a different area. There are a number of different solutions that we use for this that don't get into violating any First Amendment protections.
I'm going to open a can of worms that we will never be able to untangle, but it's literally why the people of Northbrook elected me. I know that we use the phrase welcoming in here because it mirrors what's in the mission statement of the library, and yet for 14 months, we heard language about how people didn't feel welcome here. And I wonder if that is too big of a word, or too subjective of a word, specifically for library responsibility, where it says, use and enjoy a clean and welcoming space. Can we ensure that a space is welcoming to all people, given that we've had people say that our welcome mural is offensive to them? And I know this is difficult to untangle, because it is in the mission statement and the strategic plan, so I don't have an answer, I'm just here to ask the hard questions.
One initial thought is, like, does that, does that intro sentence need to be in this policy, like, could it just jump into library responsibility and patron responsibility?
Well, it's in number seven in the library responsibility, too.
Oh, I see, yes. It used to say, use and enjoy a clean and safe space?
Which has the same problem.
Correct.
Yeah, took it out of a lot of mission statements in the residence life years.
Yeah.
And yeah, and the first sentence, we certainly can take that out, it literally is just saying that we're dedicated to fulfilling, it's the literal mission statement, so, but I, I agree.
Are we better off taking off item number seven, but leaving it in the first statement, or is that worse?
I mean, the first statement says we are dedicated to, it doesn't necessarily say it is everyone's right, it says that that is what we are aspiring, is, how I, how I intended it, and hopefully how it reads. So we could just say, use and enjoy a clean space.
Yeah. Clean space with lots of natural light. I'd be okay to just take that out.
I would be okay striking number seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I think at some point, we need to look at the mission statement. Can we just do?
We did just do the mission statement last year.
I know, but.
We can look at it again.
We did it before.
Oh, yeah.
Sure, we sure did.
Trying to be helpful.
Yeah.
So my other question, which is less of a can of worms, but probably also important, so sorry. In the paragraph after Section 11, where it talks about, or number 11, where it talks about what might happen, and I know we just talked about moving this paragraph, it talks about asking individuals to leave, and I know there were questions on social media recently about what happens if a minor is engaged in that behavior, because would we ask them to leave unaccompanied and expect them to exit the library? And I don't know that that needs to be specifically outlined here, but I do think there is a question of, may ask individuals to leave if that person.
Oh, we're in the paragraph that we moved to the top. I'm like, wait, what? I'm sorry, I did not hear the words.
Thank you, Bryce.
This is the list of examples that Kate moved it to the top.
But it says, we may ask them to leave.
And that is why we say may.
I just wonder if that still needs to be more clearly outlined about what the protocol is for minors, or maybe it doesn't, but there were a lot of questions on a recent social media post about how that was handled, or if it was handled, to be fair, a lot of questions.
That would be, I, I would think that would be something procedurally that we would lay out, similarly to how we remove language about whether or not we wait with minors after closing in our unattended children and vulnerable adults policy last month.
So does that whole sentence need to come out, then? Because isn't that all procedural, that people may be asked to leave? And then that makes it less of a?
The goal is to let people know that we have the right to ask them to leave the library.
Right.
Is kind of what that is intending. Now, it does also say that in the patron suspension policy, but this is just meant to let people know that we have the authority to say, I'm sorry, but your behavior is such that you are no longer complying with our policy, and you need to leave for the day, the week, the month, whatever. So. Would you like something, we could look at the unattended children and vulnerable adults policy, and possibly add something, if you felt that it needed to be represented in policy in some way? Because I feel like that policy is where we address how, what we do with minors in the library.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, having something that we can point families to, if they're going to ask questions about, like, how would this be addressed?
Yeah. Because we do ask minors sometimes to depart for the day.
Okay, great, thanks, Bryce.
Understanding that all policies are not enforceable, most of the time. You, you have guidelines, but it's up to the individual about how noisy is too noisy, and how much is harassment, and how, so it's good to have it to refer to, and it's going to be interpreted lots of ways.
And the goal is for us to try and be as consistent as possible, and that's what this hope is, that this will help us be more consistent.
Yeah.
It's again, everybody's speaking the same language.
Yes.
That's the critical part. Because it's a welcoming space.
But not necessarily a clean. Just reference the natural light. That's something that's there, it's, it's who we are.
This is true.
Okay, any other thoughts, comments, feedback, angry exaltations, hard questions, easy questions? Seeing none? Can I just go over to make sure I captured all of the? Okay, so we, oops, we redacted number seven under library responsibility. We moved the final paragraph about how we will address violations of the policy up to be the second paragraph. We, just, um, we changed paragraph three and number one to be condensed. And I think that was it. Right, was there anything else?
Small, great.
Sure.
Sentence consistency, that's it.
Thanks, Jennifer, yeah.
It's under patron responsibility, number two.
Old two or new two? Just tell me what the word is.
It says words or behaviors that threaten or intimidate others.
Yes.
You don't need the are not permitted, because at least, you couldn't use to, but it is not limited, but is not limited to words or behaviors that threaten or intimidate others, including. but it is not limited, but is not limited to, "Words or behaviors that threaten or intimidate others," including.
It's just including without limitation, basically, right? Is that what you're saying? You want it to close less?
The way this was written, the words "are not permitted" are just unnecessary.
Well, I think they are now because.
Well, it might be if, because it used to be.
Interference includes, but it's not limited to. And so now we've changed it, so everything is its own individual sentence.
Okay, then that case is fine.
So that was basically the only one? Sorry, no, there were some, most of them were not parallel. We're fixing it. This is great.
This is also real, real tiny, like, the tiniest thing I could point out. And number nine, old number nine, roller skates does not need a hyphen.
Just be happy that I didn't go all Dickensian and start randomly capitalizing stuff, because I do like to do that.
Also, it doesn't look like there's two spaces after periods, and I'm proud of you.
I went through, I had to go through and do a find replace. It's just my brain just likes to, to give your eye that light space.
Okay, anything else while we're nitpicking?
Because it's use, and so use is singular, and so then, yeah. I had to look at that multiple times.
Remember that time in the meeting where I taught Jay what a gerund was? I'm a delight.
Like a guest teacher.
I would love to. Oh, my gosh, that would be a dream come true.
I feel like that would make people feel very, very welcome.
Would you mind scrolling to the top, just so I could see it from the top? And then can you scroll down? Do we need, did we put in an "and" when we get rid of number seven? Yeah, perfect.
Is there a motion to approve the revised public code of behavior policy as amended, and to direct the executive director to make changes to all other policies to update the policy name? Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Policy approved? Moving on to the Northbrook Park District Intergovernmental Agreement.
So you may recall, or you may not, in many months, the Northbrook Park District asked to use our auditorium in December while the leisure center is under construction for just a few days. And we brought, we brought that to the board, I think back in April, because our auditorium usage includes fees. And we didn't, we would need to come to the board to ask to waive the fees so that the park district would be able to use that. And at that time, the board had asked me to go back to the park district and work on an intergovernmental agreement, which more firmly lays down that we are intergovernmental partners, and we do provide some in-kind services to each other based upon that. And so the agreement is finally here, after many months of work with the park district attorneys and the library's attorneys. The park district board did review the agreement earlier this week and signed it. And so I am asking all of you to consider this, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions, comments, feedback?
When we talked about this back, this is just not about this particularly, there was a possible conflict with the finals cafe and the performance that all got ironed out, I assume, and it's not a conflict?
Well, it is at the same time. But one of the, one of them is the Saturday evening, so it would be after hours, and the other is on the Sunday afternoon before finals. We don't really know what to anticipate this year with the crowds coming in for finals. We think we might see more during the week than we do on the weekend, based on when finals are falling. And also, the school is doing a rolling final schedule, so some teachers are opting to provide finals or final assignments prior to finals week. And so there may be less students studying than that happened in the past. We really don't know, but, but there is still a little bit of an overlap.
There may even be leftover pizza. Who knows what will happen? Typically do, sorry, events where it's after hours? Like if it's?
We have, yeah.
Any other questions? May I have a motion to approve the Northbrook Park District Intergovernmental Agreement as presented?
Salute.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Great, all those in favor?
I'm kind of.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Congratulations, Northbrook Park District and Library.
Take that, Park, sweetie.
They would never. Okay, lobby water feature designing and repairs, Anna?
It's me. We are planning to drain the water feature, which is the art install, or, which is part of the art installation under the stairs. And as we were looking at it, we noticed that the bases of the glass art are, need some repair. So I reached out to an art restoration specialist who's done work on the sculptures outside, and he provided a quote and told us what he was going to be doing. The maximum cost would be $12,000. So I'm asking for approval to get the bases repaired so that it looks nice. And we will drain the water feature and just leave the area empty. Like, no rock, no anything. And if people wanted to throw coins in there, they still could. They just won't hear the clink when the water, when the money drops in the water.
Hear the coins rattling around.
I had a question. Is the, is the work needed for like, or requested for aesthetic reasons? Or like, are they going to fall down? Or is there some kind of like structural reason?
I think it's more for aesthetic, but he, he does say that, you know, it's going to restore the strength of the bases. I mean, nobody really touches them. So, you know, so I don't know, like, oh, are they, I mean, I don't think they're going to fall over, but they are rusting, and they don't look very nice.
Would it diminish the structure by just covering the portion that looks like it's been frayed from the water for so many years?
26 years.
26 years, okay.
You mean just to cover it, like, put a box over it?
Something more aesthetically pleasing than cardboard Amazon box.
No, I'm not saying like cardboard box, but I'm just saying, like, have somebody build something to cover it. I mean, I could ask him if he can do that. I mean, his, his recommended, he said, "He recommended encapsulating the bottom portions in a new steel-framed box that would hide the corrosion and provide new structural integrity that would prevent the glass from breaking if one of the bases happened to fail." So that sort of is it.
Other opinions? Have you, anybody else offered a solution?
I have not gotten quotes from other vendors. When I did research to find a restoration specialist for the sculptures outside, Oakley came highly recommended, and he does a lot of work with the park in Skokie along McCormick. So that was why I just went to him, because I trusted that he would provide us with a solution that would be good for the art. I mean, I can push him a little bit more to see if he could do something a little less expensive.
Is the intention to eventually refill the water feature? Or are we getting?
No.
Okay, so.
It's all an aesthetic thing. And if you guys don't think, if you guys don't think it looks bad, we could leave it as is.
I'm leaning towards repairing it, but I'm wondering, is it, is it going to look weird not to have the water in the water feature? And is it something that is going to, I don't want to spend the money and then do the facility plan, and then we realize, oh, we really want to make a change to this.
If we decide we want to do something different, it would be during the master plan?
Yeah.
So, maybe.
So, I mean, it sounds like this is separate, independent work, so it's probably not going to be cheaper to do it with the rest of the construction the way most repair work is, because it's sort of a specialized thing anyway. But I'm wondering, A, I wouldn't want to see the artwork, have us repair it, and then see it get damaged during construction, although they would be, whoever damaged it would be responsible. But also, are we sure that we want to leave the empty water feature with the art, with the glass as it is? Is my question, I guess, if it's not going to have the water in it?
If we wanted to fill the water feature, it's a very expensive project. I mean, we've looked into that.
Right.
We looked into that a couple of years ago. I mean, I would think that we, if, if we filled it, like, let's say with concrete, we would just put these pieces on top of it.
Okay.
And, I mean, because what would you put in that space?
Right.
So, to me, we would fill it and then just put these pieces on top of however we filled it. But like, right now, if we fill it with rock or something like that, like, all of that's going to need to be cleaned.
Yeah.
And that's, it's going to be much easier for facilities to just kind of go in there and sweep it up and vacuum and do whatever. And this way, like I said, if people throw coins in, it'll be easy to pick them up.
I'm really concerned that down the line, we would say, you know, we don't want this at all. And we had already paid to.
That's what I'm worried about, yeah, that if we decide we want to make a more drastic alteration to it, and I'm not saying we should, but, because my initial thought was, we should go ahead and do the work now, because it isn't something that's going to be less expensive if you wrap it into construction.
And we pretty much completed all of the construction on the first floor.
On the first floor, oh, it's right.
Yeah, and we, we don't have as part of, at any point in the master plan discussions, have we talked about the stairs or that water feature? That came up in 2017, and we looked into it. Because many people don't love the stairs. And, but changing that would be.
Monumental.
Yes.
I mean, and I think like, from the history of the art piece, there was, there was lots of discussions, and I wasn't here then, about what to put in that space. And so many people came together to come up with that, with this art feature, with our installation, so. And I just recently learned about this, actually. It's quite interesting, the trustee, Catherine Plum, was in here telling us that we didn't have the glass panels positioned properly.
Oh.
And so she was in town, and she, we met, and she told me that the panels are actually supposed to be kind of on a diagonal and look like a book. And that's supposed to help the light kind of reflect and show. And so then I asked her to write up this little history, because I didn't know that. I was never told that.
So are we going to move the panels?
We did, we did move the panels. They are in the position that, you know, she kind of said they're supposed to be in.
Thanks for sharing that write-up, because that was really helpful. It gave me an appreciation for that artwork.
Anna and Linda are working on putting something together, because, yeah.
There is shockingly a sign on there. It's not as descriptive as it needs to be, but, yeah.
Trusted in for, but, yeah.
Maybe another can of worms kind of question, but has the artist given any direction in terms of their thoughts?
I reached out to the artist, he did not respond to me.
Okay, thank you.
So I did, I did try that to see what, but he, he never responded to me.
If he chooses not to involve himself, that's a message.
I would be inclined to be in favor of going forward with the restoration, but I'm open to options and conversations.
Could we, I'm sorry, I just didn't get a chance to go, like, look at, can we go look at it? Can I go look at it, even though everyone has to? But I just want to like, refresh on like, what the bottom of the sculpture installation is.
So we're going to pause the meeting and go and look at the water.
I hope that your experience with a lot of.
It was amazing.
Additional thoughts, comments after viewing the soon-to-be waterless feature?
I hadn't realized how rusted it really was at the bottom. It certainly is not gorgeous. And without the water, I think it'll be even more evident.
Sorry, I just want to reiterate my suggestion that the.
I have a sandbox.
Not the cardboard box part of it, but if you're, what is the term for them?
Art restoration specialist.
There you go. If they could consider other alternatives. I get the structural portion of it, but there could be a way with it not being water anymore, where if the artist is amenable to it, to just cover the base a little bit differently, and.
The artist is incommunicado, so.
The restorer. Isn't that sort of what they're suggesting they would do, though? They are going to cover the base?
Yeah, he said, he would, this metal sleeve would fit over the glass portions and then be welded to the base plate, creating an entirely new base. An epoxy will be added to the interior of the sleeve so that the flaking rusted metal will be resolidified to prevent further damage. Any seams or areas where the glass meets the frame would be adhered with a silicone so that the cross-contaminant leaching will not occur. This is a chemical corrosion that happens when glass and metal make surface contact.
So that's sort of what they're planning on doing, sort of just.
You know, the bottom line is, it's an important feature. And I think we should take care of it. It's only going to get worse. And out of respect for the donor, I don't know, it's a lovely piece of art.
Yeah, I would agree.
I think the other way to think about it is if it didn't reside there, and we did want to break up the six pieces into like, three twos, and place them elsewhere in the library at some point in time. If the bases have been fixed, and they're more secure, like, we could do that.
Right.
Right, if we chose to do something with that space, to kind of work off of what you were saying.
You're extending the longevity of the piece.
Has the library spent any funds up to date in terms of that?
In the 18 years I have been here, no.
Can I make a movement?
I'd love that.
To approve the restoration as specified.
In an amount not to exceed $12,000?
In an amount not to exceed $12,000.
Great, is there a second? Roll call, though, please.
Mr. Basar?
Yes.
Ms. Buden?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Specter Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Genical?
Yes.
Great. We do not have anything in closed session this evening. We're not going to talk about agenda building, because there's no meeting next month, and we'll all just forget before our January meeting anyway. But if you did sign up to hand out pizza during finals cafe, please don't forget that. So we'll see you here in the group of.
Can you remind me what the dates of that are, anyone? I signed up for it.
Yeah, there can be a reminder.
I believe it was December 16th, 17th.
It came to an old, it came to an old email address.
Oh!
The 16th?
Oh, wait, here, Jennifer is.
Wednesday, the 17th, and then Thursday, the 18th.
Did you, does everyone need a reminder on who signed up for what?
That would be great, I don't need it right now, but.
We can send that out tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
I haven't signed up yet, but I will.
You actually did sign up.
Oh, maybe my wife signed up.
It's very possible.
Hence the need for the reminder.
I meant to sign up.
Before that.
You know, she did not.
December 3rd for the legislative breakfast.
She's thinking of a different event.
He did, I thought, I remember seeing.
That was the other year.
Am I making things up?
Because I used to pick on Stacy.
You two were stressing me out. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
You know what, we're going to rely on Jennifer and her meticulous record-keeping.
I just have.
I didn't either, because it went to the wrong email again, and I couldn't get back in. So if there's no more, I'll come and, I'll take everybody's time.
And we will adjourn at 8:00. And we will adjourn at 8:38 PM.